All right. It is.
I did. Just, you know, Peter Edelman is having some trouble connecting, so I'll speak on his behalf.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we are. I think we are good to go.
Okay, we're gonna get our meetings started. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. My name's Dave Hamburger. And welcome folks to the Exeter Township School District's April Board Voting Meeting. And also want to welcome anyone who is watching in on our live streaming through YouTube, who may be participating on the phone, or who may be actually involved, you know, in the Zoom conference that we're having here. Before we start the actual meeting, I want to ask our Board Secretary, Mrs. Guidish, to conduct a roll call for attendance purposes.
Mr. Miller?
I'm here.
Mrs. Stratton?
Yeah.
Mr. Tertina? Dr. McLendon here. Dr. Hamburger?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Aaron's?
Here.
Dr. Herring?
Present.
Mr. Fidler? Seven board members are present at this time.
Okay, so we'll start the meeting, and I'm assuming that Mr. Fiddler will be joining us. I know he was planning on being in the meeting, is probably just having some problems getting his technology up. So as we get started, I mean, obviously, you know, we're again, you know, in the midst of adapting and doing things a little bit differently as a result of the situation that we're currently in, that we're all fully aware of. What I'd like to do before we get started and actually move into the agenda is just give Dr. Phillips and possibly Dr. Winters an opportunity to tell us a little bit about, you know, what's going on right now, you know, within our school district to bring the board up to speed. What's been happening in the past few weeks since we maybe spoke together and what you're hearing from, you know, various governmental entities that you interact with, other school districts, your colleagues and so forth, in terms of where where we see ourselves going over the next few weeks of the year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Well, I think the first thing I need to do is to just really thank everybody. You know, Mrs. Epler, our Director of Food Services on this Zoom, and what her department and she is the leader have done, the thousands of meals that have been served. Thank you so much for what you've done for the community. As far as administrators, teachers, support staff, everybody, the board members have been very supportive, the parents and the students. Our tech department has been tremendous in making sure people have devices. I'm hopefully not gonna miss anybody here because everybody on this, the community, you know, I'm looking at Mrs. Stratton and the Exeter Cares Group that she's been instrumental in. Everybody has really come together to collaborate in a goal of our students. So I think that that has to be stated right off the bat before we get into anything else. This is our second week of instruction. You know, again, fantastic things are being done. Our teachers have been tremendous. Our students are digging in. We're in the 95 to 97% range for being, attending and doing work. You know, we have pockets of situations, but our tech department is handling all the issues with devices, assisting with internet service. You know, they're basically conducting some hourly services every day to make sure people are up and running and need what they, the resources they need to continue to receive the instruction. I know I've received some emails from some parents. Again, you know, what are we doing for graduation? You know, that's coming. That information is being, the survey should be closing shortly. That information will come out. Some parents have asked about, you know, what are we doing getting our students back into the classrooms? And into the buildings. Right now, you know, we are still under a closure by the governor. And speaking with all the other superintendents, no one is being allowed in the buildings at this point due to the closure. But as you all have heard, and I'm gonna touch on it in a little bit, Governor Wolf did develop and introduced his reopening plan for the state. So we're hopeful that once the easing starts, that he will open up the buildings and give us a chance to get our teachers and our students in there to remove whatever personal items they have. You know, I know I had sent it out in my update, but just to touch on what Governor Wolf is looking for in his reopening plan, he stressed that it will be data-driven and quantifiable criteria will be used. They will provide guidance recommendations for employers, individuals and businesses, and we're looking for that guidance for school districts as well. Adequate testing must, and personal protective gear must be in abundance before he will look to do that. He wants to have a monitoring and surveillance program in place once we open to make sure we don't have a relapse. He's going to make assurances that the vulnerable population will still be protected. And he has put in place limitations of large gatherings will remain closed until the completion of the openings. So from a district's perspective, while there has been talk of the closures until the middle of May, the schools will be remaining closed till the end of the academic season. That has been given out by Governor Wolf. So virtual instruction will continue until the beginning of June. As far as what goes on beyond that, we don't know at this time. We'll be looking for the governor and legislators to give us guidance on what happens not only next year, but over the summer. There has been some discussion, and we've had some legislators talk about possible funding to support what was termed learning camps over the summer. And that would be programs that would be for all students in our classrooms if we are able to come into our brick and mortar. If not, possibly continuing the virtual instruction. So again, I can't thank everyone enough for the collaboration, the cooperation, the patience. You know, we're kind of, as I said before, we're flying, we're building this plane in the air as we're flying it. But, you know, the passion and the grit that has been shown by everybody, I think, has been outstanding. I don't know. Dr. Winters, you want to add to that?
Thanks, Dr. Phillips. Just a couple things to kind of add to that attendance piece that Dr. Phillips talked about. I think one of the metrics we can use to look at what the extent is that we're reaching all of our students is looking at our attendance data, and I reached out to the principals today to get some exact numbers collectively across all six buildings. We're at 95.7. That's our, that's our overall attendance average for the district. You know, and then we can, we can break it down by building, but no buildings below 95%. Every building is 95% or higher. And every single principal has mechanisms in place for what they're going to do to reach out to students who maybe are not logging in or are not completing the work that they need to complete. We're leveraging school counselors to help in that communication. ESL teachers where necessary, case managers if the student has an IEP, administrators are involved. So it's really a collaborative effort. And here in the early going, you know, the goal is to get those numbers as close to 100% as we possibly can as we move forward. As far as professional development, our three coaches have just been gold. I am not sure where we would be without them. We'll check Missy Dow and Karen Denunzio. They have done so much direct professional development for teachers since March and are continuing to provide support and to work with our teachers, and that is so greatly appreciated. But as Dr. Phillips mentioned, our, our staff has been amazing and, you know, our teachers have really shown, you know, what it, you know, what it means to be a great educator because the extent that they're going to connect with kids has been amazing. And all you have to do is be on Exeter's Facebook page, and you see some of the great, amazing things that our principals and teachers are doing on behalf of kids, which is fantastic.
Patrick, do we know how the other districts are doing in terms of percent?
I don't, I, I don't have that information today. We have a curriculum coordinator meeting on Friday at 11:00 in the morning that I attend along with Melissa and Andy. That's a question I can ask on Friday. I'm sure other districts have that information. I just don't have that readily at this time.
Speaking to other superintendents, they're all in that 95% range. I mean, we're really getting some good instruction being done, albeit not what we're getting done in brick and mortar, but most of the districts are all reporting in that 95% range.
Can I ask, what is our typical attendance on a, you know, in regular school?
Probably close to the same.
I was gonna say, I mean, don't hold me to the number, but that's about where we are percentage-wise. Now granted, you know, some of that is sickness and some things like that.
Here.
Right.
But we're getting some good numbers and it's nice to see.
Okay.
So.
My other question too was about the buildings reopening to retrieve items, but obviously we're waiting until we hear from the governor that we're allowed to do that. So.
And we just, in fact, we just had that discussion as a county this morning. Everyone's really focused on instruction right now. I mean, that, that's in the back of our minds, but until we're told that you don't have to stay home, I mean, really, essential people are only supposed to be out. I know that's not necessarily happening. But, you know, right now we are to remain closed, but, you know, we all basically have the same plan. And it would go in effect pretty quickly. It's not a, an in-depth plan. It's, it's, you know, quite honestly, it's, it's just getting those devices out of the lockers in a bag on a stoop for a student, you know, to pick up at certain times, and we'll get more into that when we need to. But at this point, you know, we're gonna wait till the easing goes and we get that. Go ahead.
So, Mrs. Wilson, back to your question as far as numbers. I was looking at some data on my phone as, as one of the principals had texted me. In one of our K4 buildings, there were 19 students that were absent last week. That's across every grade level. So I would say that, that's on par, perhaps even a little bit low, you know, when you think about, or, you know, less, you know, when you think about, you know, winter time and how many kids short of COVID-19 potentially might miss school due to flu or some other kind of bug that might be out there. So, you know, I think those numbers are really pretty good. You know, I feel pretty good about them in the early going.
And I just would like to clarify too, at the elementary level, it seems that we are just monitoring their time on Schoology to count attendance. Is that correct? Or is it actually handing in work?
Both. It's, it's both. It's, it's a time on Schoology and it's completion versus incompletion of work.
Okay.
It's both.
Well, thanks, Dr. Winters. Thanks, Dr. Phillips, for the update. And I, we also really appreciate the, the regular communications we get from Central Office, you know, when updates are, are necessary, we hear from you. We appreciate it. When you share that, you know, we, we feel like we really get a better sense of how this is unfolding from a district perspective. So please keep up the good work with the communication. We're gonna move into our board agenda now. And want to welcome Courtney Epler, who is our Food Services Supervisor, as Dr. Phillips, you know, mentioned, our Food Services Program is doing fantastic work, helping the community at this time. And this is an opportunity for us to hear not only about what's happening in response to the COVID-19 situation, but also I think a basic overview of our Food Services Program. So Courtney, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to you.
Hi, my name is Courtney Epler. I'm the Exeter Township School District Food Service Director, and this is my food service presentation for 2019, 2020 school year. I want to start off first with department facts. We do have in our kitchens 27 staff members. Eight of those are full-time and 19 are part-time, and that is in six kitchens. Our average food service experience is 13 years. Onto our student participation. This is as of March 2020, we had about 3,950 students. Average daily participation was about 95.38%. Breakfast as of March, we had 53,919, and lunch, we had 232,135. Both of those numbers did increase from last year, and we would have expected them to go up even further had we still been in school. The next area is eligibility summary. These are student counts for those who apply for free and reduced lunch in our district. We have about 1,025 students receiving free meals in our, for breakfast and lunch in our district. We have 154 that are receiving a reduced price meal, which they would get breakfast for 30 cents, lunch for 40 cents. We have, the next area is our direct certification. These are students that automatically qualify for free meals as a result of receiving SNAP, which is food stamps, TANF, which is Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, and DC Medicaid, which is medical assistance through the state. Direct approvals are also students deemed homeless. They usually are residing in another household other than their own. The first graph I'm going to go over is our meal participation. We do have at Jacksonwald a slight increase for breakfast. And lunch, it does show a slight decrease. Our average daily participation is about 85 students for breakfast and 225 students for lunch. Had we still been in school, we would have expected our lunch participation to actually exceed about 35,000 meals for lunch and breakfast would have been 12,000 meals. So we would have seen an increase by the end of the school year. For Lorraine Elementary, we do have an increase so far for our breakfast. And lunch, we do are showing a decrease. Our daily participation counts are about 70 students for breakfast and 230 students for lunch. Had we still been in school, we would have seen our breakfast counts closer to about 10,000 to 11,000 student meals for the school year and closer to 40,000 student meals by the end of the school year. Moving on to Owattan Creek, we have breakfast is about the same as last year. Lunch does show a slight increase. Average meal participation is about 50 students eating breakfast per day and 320 students eating lunch. Had we still been in school, we would have seen closer to 8,000 meals served at Owattan for breakfast and closer to 50,000 student lunches for the year. Meal counts. For Reiften, we do show a slight increase for both breakfast and lunch. We would have seen a bigger increase with our average participation for students, about 70 students eat breakfast a day and 325 eat lunch a day. We would have had numbers closer to about 55,000 meals per school year for lunch, and breakfast would have been closer to 12,000, which would have shown a big increase there. For junior high school, we do have a slight increase for breakfast. Lunch, it is showing a slight decrease. However, we do receive about 40 students eat breakfast a day and 280 students eat lunch on average a day. So had we been in the school year and finished out the school year, we would have been closer to 50,000 meals out of junior high school for the year for lunch and breakfast would have been about 6,000. And lastly, for our senior high school meal participation, we do have an increase for breakfast and lunch. We do have about 110 students who eat breakfast daily, and we have about 500 students who eat lunch daily. Our numbers would have been closer to 20,000 breakfast meals from the senior high school and about 80,000 lunches from the high school for the year. The next bar graphs are showing our revenue. We are up for our meals, close to $10,000 we generated in revenue for our meals that we sold. Catering, we do show a slight decrease. We are no longer catering for Burke's Christian and also some loss of events that we would have held at the end of the school year. Parties made easy, we do at Owattan Creek for students celebrating birthdays. They purchased smart snack, compliant snacks to hand out in the classroom, or, I'm sorry, in the cafeteria that they can enjoy. Our federal reimbursement, we have not received our March reimbursement. And also for April, May and June, so those federal reimbursement numbers should go up as well. Expenses, we do have a slight increase from last year in our food expenses. Something I plan to do now that we're in this pandemic is to use what food items we have in the freezers to make meals for the pandemic, to reduce costs, limit what we're purchasing, since we are not bringing as much in as we would if we were open during the normal school year. Our supplies amount is staying pretty steady. Repairs did drop a little bit from last year, and our benefit and wages are down about $50,000 from last year, which is great. Food service budget. This is as of March 2020. We are still reading, waiting on our reimbursements from March, April, May, so this, these numbers could change a little bit by the end of the school year. Right now, I'm trying to reduce the overall costs by using up some of our commodity dollars. In particular, our DOD, which we receive fresh fruit and vegetables. We are also able to request more because we are serving food during the pandemic. So I plan to reduce costs by not purchasing rather than get free produce to help offset those costs. Some quick facts. Jacksonwald Elementary, we have a total enrollment of 386 students. Of those students, 140 are free to receive breakfast and lunch through our schools every day. We have 120 that are directly certified, again, receiving free meals through our schools. Reduced students, we have 23 of those, they can get a 30 cent breakfast or 40 cent lunch. Our average meal participation, we do have 85 students on average that eat breakfast every day, 225 students are eating lunch. Some ways that I'm hoping to increase our meal participation and sales for the next year. Giving students more choices or varieties, helping promote meals to prepare meals to parents rather, in monthly food service newsletter and school social media. Also asking the students what they like and dislike, getting the students to be more involved. At Lorraine Elementary School, some quick facts, we have total enrollment of 434 students. Of those, we have 146 that are free, 129 that are directly certified, and 20 that are reduced students. Our average meal participation for breakfast is 70 students, lunch about 230 students. And some ways to increase meal participation and sales, maybe change the look of the cafeteria by using student artwork, contest with art featuring the school meals by the students. Provide the value of school meals message to parents at back-to-school night, showing them what they receive if they do choose to participate in breakfast or lunch at school. What is their students actually eating when they are in school? At Owattan Creek, we have an enrollment of 607 students. Of those students, 155 are free. We have 134 directly certified and 21 that are reduced students. Our average meal participation is 50 students that typically eat breakfast every day and 320 students eat lunch. Some ways to increase meal participation and sales, try Tuesday. This is something that we can try. A new snack idea, menu idea, give them a little sample and get their feedback if they like it or not, in hopes to put it on the menu in the future. Also themed menus days, starting to do different holiday-shaped nuggets geared towards opening day of baseball, the Super Bowl, having the kids excited to come into the cafeteria to see what we are offering. Reiften Middle School, we have total enrollment of 626 students. Of those students, 181 are free and 159 are directly certified. Our reduced students are 29. Our average meal participation for breakfast is 70 students. We have average participation, meal participation for lunch is 325 students. Some ways to increase meal participation and sales, add colorful menu signage, change the packaging. We are serving our food items and how we present our menu items, making, making it more appealable. Also informing parents, the meal benefit applications can be filled out at any time during the school year. Not just during, during the beginning of the school year. Also informing them that it is anonymous, their child is not singled out for receiving any free or reduced meals. For junior high, our quick facts, we have total enrollment of 587 students. Of those students, we have 155 that are free. We have 134 that are directly certified. We have 21 that are reduced. Our average meal participation for breakfast is 40 students and for lunch is 280 students. Some ways to increase meal participation and sales, involve the students in creating menu items. Ask for their feedback on, on what they want to see on the menu. Comment box, help to get some feedback on their likes and dislikes on what we're currently offering to help increase sales. And also decorating, decorating the menu board or sneeze guard on the salad bar with positive food and nutritional messages. Senior high school quick facts, we have total enrollment of 1,310 students. Of those, 286 are free and 237 are directly certified. We also have 42 students that are reduced students. Average meal participation for breakfast is 110 students per day and lunch is 500 students, 500 students per day. Some ways to increase meal participation and sales, keep it fresh. Rotating snacks, maybe on a six-week cycle like the menu is, not having the same snacks helps increase appeal. Also, a new thing I was thinking about is game day meals, providing specific menus with nutritionals geared toward students who will require added energy. Some of those would be the band, sports, or really just anyone interested in fitness. And I was hoping to do this on Fridays before a big event. And then I also was thinking of ways to reduce the water bottles. I know we just installed water fill stations, so possibly selling Exeter-designed reusable water bottles to help reduce some of those water bottles that we have. Currently, we are serving during the COVID-19 pandemic, we distribute about 5,500 meals from our four schools every week. Those that qualify for the meals must be, be between two and 18 years old. We started with five sites. We are now down to four sites. This was due to the fact that we were transporting meals to Antietam Rec Center. And just with the risk of food safety, we wanted to help eliminate that. So we narrowed it down to four school sites. Owattan Creek, Lorraine, Reiften and Senior High School. And we will be distributing our meals every Wednesday from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. We will be reimbursed from the state for our meals served during COVID-19 pandemic. We are protecting the staff. We are providing gloves that they wear along with machine washable masks. That way, they are always protected. We are also ensuring safety on the front line of food distribution. We have tables set up where the staff slide the meals to them, so there is no direct contact from person to person. And we also are making sure that it's mandatory, that staff must check their temperatures and report to me any high temperatures every day before they go into work. Um overall, staff are doing a great job stepping up to the new challenges that we are all facing, and I'm very proud of them. Um I have some pictures just to show and highlight what our staff are actually doing in the cafeterias. Uh Senior High started with about five hundred meals each week, they are now distributing fifteen hundred meals every week. We have Reifton and Junior High, we combined these kitchens uh to reduce costs. Um they started with six hundred and fifty meals and are now up to fifteen hundred meals a week. A Watten and Jackson Wald, again, we combined two kitchens just to reduce some cost, um and we have staff working together. They started with about four hundred and fifty meals a week and are now up to five hundred or fifteen hundred meals a week now. Lorraine Elementary, they started with three hundred meals a week and are now up to a thousand meals a week, which is great. Uh this is just illustrating um how much we were transporting to Antietam and what a great effort the staff all did. Um loading the food, boxing up the food, transporting the food using um. Uh Laura Li, who is a bus driver, but also a food service delivery uh worker in our district. Uh just showing how much everyone is participating and really stepping up. I could not be more proud of food service uh at this time, um thank you for your time. And.
Courtney, thanks for the uh excellent presentation, that was uh I think a really comprehensive overview, not only of uh again. What we've done this year and the trends of in food services, but also the great work that's happening right now to help support our kids in the community. Word members, um any any questions for for Courtney, any follow-up questions?
Yeah, I do, oh go ahead, go ahead, Allison.
I have just one question, um has there been a change to the types of foods that the students are served? I know that Michelle Obama put guidelines in that certain foods couldn't be served, and has that been changed? And are you, are there different, more foods allowed that were not previously?
Did you say Michelle Obama?
Yeah, the guidelines that she had put in, like she took a lot of things out and, you know, made guidelines about what could and cannot be served in. At in school lunches and I I was that, did that change and are foods are different now?
Not really, we still follow it, we make sure they're having their their fruit, their dairy, uh meat or meat alternative. And um it's mostly all whole grain, um they're getting towards the point where they're allowing some fifty percent of the week's um meal count to be. Um it could be some half grain or half whole grain where the rest could be just white breads, that's about the only thing that's changed. Um we make sure that we're doing a variety of foods, though, we do um cereal. Um we still kind of actually follow the menu, um as far as breakfast goes, we do the cereal. Um pancakes, waffles, French toast, um they do cereal bars, and then they make sure they're getting their fruit. Um or canned fruit, fresh fruit, um one percent milk, the hundred percent juices. And then their lunch is is similar to lunchtime, we do the Uncrustables. Um we're having a lot of difficulty getting um prepackaged foods in. Um I was told by one of the reps for Cisco that a lot of those food items are actually going to the hospitals first. Um so we are, uh we had to come up with a new plan. Um so we're we're having staff uh make more of those frozen frozen items, um they're doing fajitas, tacos. Um starting to do sandwiches and things like that still, but um just coming up with new a new game plan when. What we're expecting to come in doesn't come in, uh so it's been it's been a challenge, but. Everyone has been good and flexible about how we still get the meals out there, so I'm I'm thankful for the staff being um able to like roll with the punches.
Thank you.
Okay, I Courtney, my question was, and I I think you might have said it in the beginning, but I didn't really notice it until you went to the school slides. Was directly certified number go into the free number, like, so is that a part of that total?
Um no, it actually will be the direct certifications, those are students um that they get pulled from um the Compass website. So um that's a whole different category, where the top eligibility summary, those are students that actually apply. And I received those applications on um Premier Edge is our uh software system that we use, so I have to do two separate um applications.
Okay, so there is a directly certified group plus a free group plus a reduced group, okay.
Yeah, and the directly certified, they'll be free, but they're counted differently.
Okay, and then my other comment was, I just wanted to say that. Okay, I just wanted to um comment how I really liked that you had different goals. Um for the different schools and for the different grade levels and the different ages, I thought that was a great way um to think about it, so kudos to that.
Thank you, thank you.
Um Courtney, just a nice job with the presentation, first of all, um there was a there was an item on the very first slide that I didn't understand. I think it said denied eighty-eight. What what is what have denied?
Those are um applications that I receive um online through the school cafe, they are students that um they're denied because they're over income. They don't meet um the hundred and eighty-fifth percent of the poverty line, so they, but they can apply again, so especially now. Um we don't really have to worry about it right now with um we're feeding everyone, but um say we go back to the new year, those rules don't apply. And some one of the parents loses um a job, you know, they could apply again, they can apply every month if they wanted to.
Okay, all right, thanks, the other question I had is where do we stand on the outstanding debt that's uh students and their families have?
So um that is something actually I'm going to tackle as my next um task. Um we were, right now, school cafe was closed, um however. Um they, parents can and guardians can still make payments um to their balances. Uh so that's something I need to figure out as far as how do we get the message out there, so parents are still making those payments. Um and we send out letters, um anyone below uh really below a negative balance, we send out um a letter to the families, letting them know. We, they can come in and make payments in the school, not right now, or um we can set them up with a payment plan. Um just so they're not overwhelmed seeing, you know, their balance that they owe.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Um Courtney, first of all, thank you so much for all your hard work, I really do appreciate um, you know, the. The uh the hard work that you're putting into all of this and the time and energy. My question is uh particularly about, is there any waste at all, is there, is there like a a surplus? Or is there like a a lack of, was there any kids being denied or anything?
Um are you talking about serving right now?
Yes.
Uh it's, we're really struggling just to get the food items, um. We'll have orders every week, but we have enough in the store, like in freezers, that we're able to, um like since Jackson Wald's down and Junior High's down. We actually pulled all their food from their freezers and have been using that, um. It's, it's just relying on something to come in um and trying to prep at least a week to two weeks ahead. We we had to get that down, um just being prepared and having Plan B and C and D and E and F. Because um a lot of schools are in the same position that um there's just no, it's not a hundred percent. Certain that you'll get what you order, so that I think has been the hardest thing to to just plan for.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that no kid is left behind kind of thing, that's what I was wondering about, so it's not like.
No, and I, you know, I think we've done a good job at getting the news out there, um I'm thankful um that we have other outlets like um the the Exeter Moms that. Um let parents know and family members know that they can come get a meal, um and I've had a lot of emails. Um just asking it where they go to, um is it okay if they pick up for friends, family, like not family members, but friends, um neighbors. Um so we're just trying to like make it as easy as possible at this point.
Okay, all right, great, I wish I was right where you are at the beach right now.
Trying to make it happy.
Thank you.
Courtney, I I want to also just make a comment about the um uh your statement about the bottles at the high school, particularly the filling stations, which I hope become. You know, much more common throughout the district, uh where we can reduce or eliminate our dependence upon the bottled, you know, water. Uh but also I want to encourage you to continue to kind of examine our use of plastics across the board, you know, our. Um you know, everything that we use in terms of food delivery for students for lunches and breakfast. Uh and whenever possible, try to find things that are uh either reusable or uh less environmentally damaging than the plastics that we're currently using. We've had this conversation before, and I know this is a struggle, because a lot of it has to do, you know, with, you know, the costs of the products that you're looking for, but. I I think many of us have a very strong commitment to doing everything we can to protect, you know, our our environmental resources. And um appreciate, you know, the 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 challenge that you have to do this and hope that you um, you know, would uh kind of engage that. Um challenge and see what you could do to to kind of move us forward in that direction as much as you can.
Absolutely.
Thank you, are there any other questions for Courtney? Thank you, nice work, you're welcome to stay on if you like, um we're, but we're going to move on into the agenda and we have. Um uh Mr. Jamie Schlesinger, as well as Peter, Mr. Peter Ellman, uh this evening tonight. Um uh Mr. Schlesinger's with um PFM, uh Mr. Ellman is our bond counsel through Stevenson Lee. And um they'll be kind of walking us through the the twenty twenty uh bond restructuring or um refunding uh resolution. Gentlemen, it's up to you.
Great, hi, hi, everyone, I'm going to probably do most of speaking, I think Peter is having some uh technical problems, but I can uh handle the the legal side too, if anyone has questions on that. Uh last week, I went through, a couple of weeks ago, I went through a pretty detailed presentation about the concept of refinancing some of your existing debt. Uh the concept was simply uh through a two-step process, uh you have uh four issues outstanding that is available to refund. You can turn to the next page, I'll I'll run through the next page next. So based on what the market looks like, interest rates have been are low, uh it's been a choppy market just because of the economy and things that are going on, of course. So we're looking to at all avenues to potential refinance, so on the page that you're seeing here on page two. Uh the yellow highlighted sections, they're the four bond issues that are outstanding, we're going to be focusing tonight on the three to the right, so that would be, you know, columns five, seven and eight. Uh which is the twenty thirteen fifteen A and fifteen B bonds, uh those are the bonds that are currently callable and that will be associated with the resolution for tonight. I will be back uh probably in a couple of months to talk about the second step, which is the, which is the third column, which is the series A of twenty twelve. Uh based on what is outstanding, we're a little over twenty-ish million dollars of outstanding principal, about twenty-two million or so. And yet, interest rates range between two and three percent, so uh we think we could do better than that, so that's the goal for to reduce interest expense and and save us some money, turn to the next page. So as I highlighted, these are the bonds that are available, uh the twenty thirteen bonds, fifteen A and fifteen B, again, the last one is the twenty twelve A. Uh again, a little over twenty-two million dollars in the ranges that are shown here, again, they're pre-paled at any time without penalty at this point, because they're past the call date, so. As soon as we can get moving, uh we're going to lock things in uh to save the money, go to the next page. So we have one minor change to the timeline uh that I described during the last meeting. Uh I talked to Ann uh about a week and a half ago, uh we've had some really good experience with a very large, a couple of large banks that have the money to to lend. So about on the, I believe in the tent, we distributed a bank loan request proposal as a little curve ball. Uh to give us some additional uh knowledge in the market, so conceivably, we're going to be comparing both the bond market and the bank loan market at the same time. And from my perspective, you know, like we've done in the past, whatever produces the most savings is what we're going to go with. So the resolution that we're going to discuss tonight allows for either one of those alternatives, so the proposals for the bank loans will be coming back on May first. And around that time, I will be talking to Ann uh with those results, and we'll determine if we're going to proceed with the 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 bond issue or go with the bank loan. Uh based on what we've seen from from a couple of proposals from another school district up in Lehigh County, I think there's a good chance if if those banks come through, we may do a bank loan here, so. Uh makes Ann's life a little easier and uh and and maybe we'll save some more money than we expected, so keep your fingers crossed on that, but again, on May first, that's when we expect to make that decision. Uh from that point, uh we would, uh if we we've got the bank loan, we'll just work toward accepting a proposal. And conceivably, we could uh file with D C V and settle uh sometime in in June. If the bank loans don't come in as strong as we as I expect, uh then we'll proceed with the credit rating process, uh we'll probably have a rating call in early May. And again, we could potentially price in the mid to end of May, and again, the similar settlement uh that I described as sometime in June, you can turn to the next page. So uh like we've done in the past, uh tonight's resolution is called a parameters resolution. Uh so since we don't have anything in hand right now, what we're asking the board to do in dollars, the maximum final maturity, which would be uh twenty, uh May of twenty twenty-seven. And the maximum uh total payments, as well as the maximum interest rate, which would be five percent. Obviously, if we receive a five percent overall interest rate, that's not going to work, uh that's really to give us flexibility if we get a bond issue and receive premium bonds, and that's a that's a conversation for another day. But this gives us all the flexibility to to do what we need to do, uh obviously, uh we would not proceed if we, you know, don't expect to get the savings that we're hoping for. I'm thinking right now, based on, you know, the bank loan rates that we could get in potential bond market, I think the savings are going to range between five and maybe nine hundred thousand dollars. So hopefully it's on the high end, uh that was actually higher than I thought from the last meeting, and that's because of how strong the bank loan we received from that other, from that other uh school district, so hopefully that works out. Uh the next page, I think, is just a disclosure, uh so I think we're we're okay if anyone has any question, oh, that's the schedule, I apologize. This is what the uh the max parameters looks like, again, it really only matters for the the Commonwealth purpose, uh but understand that these are what the parameters we're looking, uh looking for tonight. I'll stop for a second, uh again, I hit all the high notes, uh obviously, we're we're looking to save some money and use this all the flexibility to do what we need to do. I can briefly talk about the the resolution a little more detail, if anyone has any questions. So I know you you don't have to put up the uh the the resolution, I think you're solicitor and you probably have it in your packets. Uh but if you do happen to have it, then we're the one can open it, but uh it is a legal document that essentially gives, again, the authorization for the finance team, the administration. Uh to take all the necessary steps to formally approve uh whatever the 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 structure that we we pick, whether it's the bond issue or bank loan. Uh we would, you meet the parameters, I did describe the max principal amount, max interest rates, the uh max payments and the final maturity. And uh once we meet all those standards, we would file with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And uh look toward getting necessary documentation signed uh with a formal settlement, which would happen in a month or so. Outside of that, it's uh names the paying agent, whoever that may be, uh as well as uh any any ancillary items that are associated with with including uh the transaction. Uh that's, that's everything I think you need to know about the resolution. If anyone have any questions?
Uh this is my first go-around on this uh Jamie for debt.
Sure.
Um you say the max will be twenty-five million.
Yeah.
How much of that is new debt? Or are we, are we just substituting twenty-five million dollars in old debt for twenty-five million dollars in new?
Yeah, so there's no new debt, no new money involved, this is all refinancing, so I would tell you in real life, we're probably going to end up with about twenty-two million dollars. So you are approving twenty-five, uh once this is all said and done, if we get bank proposals back, that will be enough to pay off the old bonds, pay the the costs. And uh and 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 meet the standards of of the maximum parameters. The technical side of why we do more than than is necessary is if we were to sell bonds and we received a certain structure. It's possible we could exceed the amount that we're refunding, so it gives us some flexibility to make adjustments, but since we don't have those, you know, bonds or proposals in hand. We have to use these crazy numbers, either way I'll say it, so understand that, we won't do anything that won't make any sense, uh but we have to kind of. Live within the parameters of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Okay. And just to follow up, if I may, where, where do we stand in terms of our debt holdings with comparably sized and situated school districts?
That's a good question. I think you're, 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 you're in a, you're in a good level. When you, if we go through the credit rating process, you'll get a, you would get a credit rating for it. I could probably pull one up and give you an idea, but I don't think you exceed many standards, you know, as you, you know, living in the district in the past. The, you know, you did a fair amount of building over the, you know, the last few years. There hasn't been a tremendous amount of major projects within the last, you know, seven or eight years at this point. So I think you fall in, in a good range and you don't exceed anything that's over and above what most school districts look like in the double A category.
Great. Okay.
And that does fall within your credit rating.
All right. That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey folks, it's Peter Adelman. I think I may have audio. I, I wanted to say hello. Jamie did a great job describing the resolution. And if there are any questions specifically about the legal side, I am here.
Thank you, Peter.
You bet.
Jamie, once again, great job. This is Sherry Miller. Kind of question for you. I know with all these banks and these PPP loans going on and things like that.
Good question.
Will we have any issues with getting our interest rate or loan or borrowing at all based on what's going on with that?
That's a fantastic question. So we are doing a, a fair amount of bank loans throughout the state. And you're, you're exactly right. Many of the banks that are, that are dealing with the stimulus package and, and the PPP programs, they, they have been working tirelessly to fill those applications. Much of the money's been used for this, this amount. I believe the next round will be coming relatively soon. So we provided the banks a little additional time to go through their credit process because of the fact that they've been so inundated with, with the programs itself. They've just been, you know, working tirelessly to, to, to execute those, those loans itself. So we have received a couple of banks, you know, pushing back and saying we can't bid. But, you know, we, we did our best to, to offer enough time to, to get most of the banks to, to provide a proposal, hopefully within the period of time by May 1st. But yeah, it's entirely, that is what's happening in this market, the bank side. They, they have money. They just can't get to it because their credit people are working so hard to go through the process on, on the federal side through this PTP programs.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So I think from this perspective, we're, we're just looking for you at some point later tonight to consider the resolution. And, you know, we'll hopefully come back with good news through Ann. And the next time you'll see us will probably be in a couple of months, hopefully with the, the second set of parameters for the second set of refundings.
That's great. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Peter, for being on the line. And again, we'll be taking action later this evening.
You bet. I would just remind you that it should be a roll call vote for the debt ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Peter.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to the next section of our agenda, which is public comments. And my understanding is that folks from the public who have any questions or comments associated with the items on the agenda or any other topics that are relevant for the board to hear would be submitting those, those questions and comments online. So I'm going to ask Mr. Joe Way, do we have any comments from the community?
I believe we have one. It's from Duncan McKelvey. He'd like to know what's being done with the funds for the, related to the 2020 senior class graduation ceremony.
Ooh, did, am I muted? No, we've got you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll probably have to turn that over to Mr. Winters or, or Dr. Winters or Dr. Phillips.
Well, what I can say at this point, nothing is being done with it. There has been no decision yet from the senior class as to what they want their graduation to look like. Mr. Campbell has put a team together to develop what graduation would look like. They have developed a survey that's been sent out to all the seniors. And at, shortly that survey will close and then that team will gather some options to basically see what our seniors want in graduation. And at that point, the discussion of what, where and how much it will cost will commence. But at this point, nothing has been done with the funds because we haven't made a decision as to what type of graduation we will have, where that graduation would be held and probably most importantly, when that graduation will be held.
Mr. Campbell is on here if he has any further comments to add.
How'd I do, Mr. Campbell?
That was perfect summary. We're going to be meeting with the advisors next Monday. We're still taking input from the seniors for that initial round. And I can foresee us roughing out a couple of different pathways that we can adjust to as the conditions that you just described unfold.
Thank you, sir.
That is all the questions that I have at this point.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Way.
You're welcome.
Going to move into our word voting sessions. Want to I want to recognize that.
Do we want to do Ann's presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that on my agenda.
No, it's okay.
So at this time, we're going to, we're going to move into the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget, food services budget with Mrs. Skydish. Sorry, Mrs. Skydish, you're up.
She likes to speak, so she wouldn't let that slide.
No, I'm.
Thanks for stopping me.
We can skip if you'd like.
I stepped right over. I went right to public comments. That was my mistake. You're on.
I'm waiting for.
Yeah, I can't get it to come up. If you can just give me one brief moment here.
Can I share my screen?
Yeah, let me, let's do that. Give me one second. And I think I'm going to just do that. That'll go quicker. All right. Okay. You should be able to now.
Okay, we will look at the 1920 estimate primarily expense and then we'll jump into 2020 and then look at the food service budget this year and next year. I've gone through the expenditures and these are subject to change because there's still some information that I, I don't know, but based on expenses we won't incur, let's start, start at the top, wages. Anticipating it'll be 260,000 less than what my estimate was about a month ago. That has to do with per diem sub wages we will not incur after March 13th, extended season, game workers and some areas of overtime that would have been incurred for mechanics, possibly some custodians, moving on to benefits. Again, wages go down, social security retirement go down in those areas. Also reducing our dental expense by about 70,000 because those, the delay in people's appointments. So benefits down 178,000, professional, technical. I'm, I was a little too quick to bring this number down. I was awaiting an answer from our special ed supervisors on contracted services, in particular OTPT and speech, and also some behavioral support. And I have to work on this number because I don't know exactly what level they, students are receiving. Some of those services may be at a reduced level. And the way they monitor it, and I've just found this information out this evening, is they are sharing Google sheets or Google documents with the contractors that will list the amount of services and that's how we will verify what we're being invoiced. So that number will probably go up a little bit on my next presentation. Other areas that have decreased, let's move on to purchase services, a 99,000 reduction. Other purchase services, $125,000 reduction that has to do with contracted transportation. For extra runs where that we're not incurring, travel reimbursement will be in doubt, will be down as well as postage expenses. Next category, 600 supplies. Again, supply is not being spent because schools are closed. Our diesel cost will be down even though we are incurring a cost due to the commitment of fuel that we had made as part of the bid. So in that area, 176,000. Those are the major portions of the decrease, which is a total of 1.2 million less in expense for this year. But again, I will update this as I gain more information, particular about professional and technical services. Just to point out, as far as tuition, we, the supervisor of special education have been providing the continue, the continuity of education plans from the provider. So we are continuing to pay those, the tuition related to those placements. I mean, they have to accept them and they communicate with me and then we will process payment as long as they're approved. So looking at the estimate for revenue for 1920, I presented this about a week ago. Made some minor changes to EIT and transfer tax. So 178,000, that number has not changed. So moving on to the summary of revenue expense and fund balance. The first column in green, the budget was adopted with a deficit of 2.7. The estimate on 331, deficit of 1.6 million approximately. Now we're at about 500,000. That number will go up a bit based upon the information I found out about contracted services. Jumping into 2021, the local revenue and the impact of the pandemic. The real estate collection rate I had shown on 331, I used 97.5, down from my initial assumption of 98%. In discussions with other business managers and really just such uncertainty, I decided that I would use a rate of 96.65. That really reflects a rate we would have seen back in 2008, 2009 during that recession. Again, these, we will have to see how this all plays out. But that impacts our real estate tax by 645,000, a reduction of 645,000. Earned income tax collection. This analysis was provided by the director of earned income tax this past Friday. And while they did not go back to, into their historical records of 2008, nine, they really consulted among collectors in a state of what they thought the impact would be. And just going down to the, the right, the column on the right shows a percentage decrease of 12.33 and that, that's an average. If you look at the percentages there in the, this year through June, you know, it's not, you know, five to 10%, then they're expecting July, August, September to be up to 30% and then in October, November, around 15%. Again, I don't think anyone really knows. So we're all really trying to be conservative and be prepared for a reduction. So back in 2009, 10, 10, 11, that's where we saw an exeter reduction in EIT of 3.7% or $130,000. So where I've landed in an assumption was a 7% decrease. I'm using an average. You know, I, I can't at this point justify using a 12% reduction because it didn't happen in 2009, 10, 10, 11. I could be completely wrong, but based upon the history and using the information from EIT, I think a reduction of 275,000 in 2021 is reasonable at this point. Transfer tax, I did not change this assumption, 25% or 125,000 less. I just mentioned from the business privilege tax, I use 12 and a half percent. And that's 80,000 interest income. I did reduce that further based upon some projections provided by PASBO. So that'll be down 380,000. Moving on to state subsidy, I have, in this presentation, flat funded basic education and special education to the 1920 levels. So, you know, about 170,000, I take, I took out of the proposed final. What I've done is added 357,000 of the care federal funding to the proposed final budget. While there's still, whilst this is still an estimate and we're not sure what the governor will do in terms of this federal funding. I thought it appropriate at this point to include that and flat fund our state revenue. So in summary, the change in 2020 proposed final revenue, 1.3 million in local sources, reduction, state sources, a reduction of 181,000 in federal, increasing it to 300, by 357,000 or 1.1 million plus. Moving on to the reductions that we have been working on for a few months and more recently trying to identify additional ones, most immediate that we're looking at, at the elementary is reducing our part-time classroom eight hours by one hour per day. This is across K through six grade levels for part-time aides. What we have identified is that the way scheduled are designed in the elementary aides were not doing, assisting in direct instruction. They were doing some clerical work. So by modifying their schedules and this reduction of one hour, they'll be better able to support the teachers and the students in the classroom. But at the same time, this change would impact wage by 105,000. That would reduce expense by that amount. So the focus is on maintaining professional staff while still providing support. Library aides, we've had discussions with the principals about this and they are on board. The computer aids often provide a lot of support in the library in terms of research. So we are confident that existing staff will be able to fill role of what part-time library aides are doing, 24,500 lesson expense. School counseling secretary at Reifton, part-time, that is the only elementary that has a part-time secretary and based upon their staffing of two counselors in that building, we believe work could be shifted 12,900 less in wage and benefit. In speaking with principals, looking at prior, prioritizing some of the things they requested, student furniture at Lagrange and Ogwatten will be deferred to a future year and that will reduce expenses by 35,700. Moving on to secondary, senior high position, special education will not be filled. And the services that are needed will be provided by other staff. That's 89,000 lesson wage benefits. Junior high, English teacher who has resigned, that position will not be filled. There will be schedule changes made to accommodate those, those sections of English or 106,000 less in wage and benefit. Removal non-essential budget items, junior and senior high. They'll be deferred to a future year when more funds are available, 27,000 less in minor equipment costs. Other expense reductions include healthcare premium decrease. We're part of a consortium, a health trust, Berks County School Districts, and that premium has been reduced from five and a half percent to 2%. And that premium has been reduced from five and a half percent to two percent, two hundred sixty-seven thousand less in benefit costs. As we are negotiating to contracts, our professional and our support. Building the budget, I have to include assumptions based upon what. Increases are being given in other districts as well as advice from our legal or. Our solicitor and. What I've done here is to reduce the amount of the assumption. To be more in line with a target that you may be able to achieve during negoti- negotiations or a hundred fifty-three thousand less in budget. Business manager secretary position, the person is retiring and they'll be adjusting it to part-time. And we will. Be decentralizing a lot of the duties that she currently does. They're across building secretaries as well, across central administration secretaries and. Based upon the challenges that we have in terms of a structural deficit related to staffing. We have to look at every position and trying to work harder and do things better. Our K to twelve literacy coach, which is currently locally funded, will be funded with title-two funds. Which results in a reduction of staff development costs of sixty thousand. We're also asking for a ten percent across the board reduction in supply. I believe this amount is achievable. Principals and administrators have held the line on their expenses. But at this point, we are in need of additional reductions. Also capital asset projects, there, we've decided at this point to defer some security cameras. As well as clock systems, the total of ninety thousand. And discretionary capital project budget item, previously moved. A hundred thousand out of the general fund for capital projects, this is an additional sixty-five thousand. Finally, we have a budgetary reserve, all districts do, for things that are unforeseen, such as special education. Costs or hiring new teachers when we have an uptick in enrollment. That is three hundred thousand in the budget, we're reducing it by a hundred thousand. In total, these reductions are one point three million, which reduces our expenditures for twenty twenty-one to approximately seventy-nine point four million. Well, those, while, while what I just summarized were immediate, we also need to start looking, you know. Into next year. And looking at reducing extracurricular activity offerings, and this may be something that. Well, it is something we have to start looking at right away. Should we reduce our regular part-time classroom aides even further? That would double the decrease. Should we impose an additional ten percent? Reduction in supply in twenty-one, twenty-two, just want to emphasize that these are, we're just trying to add to the list of things that we need to evaluate. And. Build consensus among administrators, different stakeholders, as well as getting direction from the school board on what we should pursue. Reducing instructional software and resource purchases, I mean, the. The staff is currently looking at opportunities to not renew certain licenses, those things that really. May not be as useful to our program. Opportunities to look at reducing full-time hourly. Support employees days. Just reducing by a half an hour for full-time employees. It could produce a savings of over a hundred thousand dollars. Request for proposal to contract out, this is not uncommon, you know, among school districts, when you're faced with. A structural deficit, you have to look for opportunities to save cause with the. The possibility that the Peasars employer contribution rate going up. After twenty twenty-one, I strain on the budget, you know, you have to look at these types of. You know, opportunities to possibly say it both support and management staff as well as athletic trainer services. At the same time, we really need to look at all. All areas, all staff and look at our administrative staff and if there is opportunities for potential reduction. Finally, exploring and looking at how we can alter our K to twelve program while maintaining a basic quality education. But looking for ways to possibly reduce professional staff. Looking at programs at the elementary level, for example, K-12 or strings, which is. Very desirable, but it there's, there's no standards. Looking at the electives and the size of those classes at the senior high and whether all those classes should be. Looking at the special offerings of this junior high in terms of world languages, computer applications. Offer so much, but when you are looking to control your budget expenditures, you have to look at how much you are offering. So for twenty twenty-one, looking at the proposed final reductions and the, the immediate ones, the one point three million. We went from eighty million, seven hundred eight thousand to seven, seventy-nine million, three hundred eighty-six thousand. Moving on to the summary. Of revenue expense and fund balance. The first column to the left in yellow is the estimate, which I summarized. I. On three thirty-one, we were looking at a deficit for twenty twenty-one of three point seven million. Currently today, looking at a deficit of three point four million. And the final two columns, the one in green shows applying the index, the three point three percent. That would generate about one point five million, bring the deficit down to one point eight. Final column in pink is a reflects a one point, excuse me, a one percent increase in mileage that generates a little wonder at five hundred thousand. Bring the deficit down to two point nine. Are there any questions about the slides on revenue expense or fund balance? Think that is a no. So I would like to, before I finish up with the food service budget, really talk about the timeline for. Adopting the proposed final, the current timeline has. A special voting meeting slated for May twelfth. And then the final adoption of the budget, June sixteen, there has to be thirty days between those two dates. We, there is. If the board would consider it, moving the adoption of the proposed file to May nineteenth. And then pushing the final adoption back to June twenty-third. So. It's just a week, but it gives additional time to learn more information, especially in terms of what's going to happen at the state level with that, with their budget. And also to really look at. You know, our recommended reductions in expense. And obviously look at the assumptions I've made in terms of the decline in local revenue. Does anyone have any? Opinion about that or preference?
If I can jump in quick, I think that we should go ahead and do that. You know, I think we have a lot more uncertainty still that is going to be flushed out. And that additional week could really count, and I think that our administrators are asking for that. For the ability to take more time to try and understand exactly what's happening, so I think that we. Should all get behind that and whether that means moving the voting meeting or having just a special voting meeting to approve just the budget, I'm totally on board with that.
Right, it would mean moving. The voting meeting. In June to June twenty-third.
Yeah, I think that's totally fine, and also just looking, I mean, there is another Tuesday in June as well, June thirtieth, so if we needed to move it back. Another week, we could do that as well.
The only difficulty with June thirtieth is getting our tax bills printed. Time for July one, they don't have an issue with June twenty-third. But we would be. We wouldn't get them out by July one if we moved it to June thirtieth.
Okay.
So. And the last item relates to. Payment of taxes, some districts have been considering increasing the number of installment payments. Right now we have three and third one is November thirtieth. This was done. A couple of years ago, I believe, to push it back the last one to November thirtieth, and this setup is very. I would say. Good for those who chose to take installments and in this environment, you know, some people who need more time. To get their funds together, having. A payment due in November thirtieth, then just leaves only one month in December as penalty. So I don't know that there's any merit to increasing to four payments, some districts are considering five, you know, July through November. The IU system doesn't accommodate five right now, but if a lot of school districts are considering it, they may change their programming. So what I'm going to basically do is game, you know, look. You know, talk to the tax collectors and talk to other school districts and see if there's any merit to four payment dates. And I'll report back to the board, but also investigate about waiving. The ten percent penalty for failing to pay an installment. By the due date, our resolution indicates that. If an installment is not made by the due date, we will assess a ten percent penalty and that's something that I think probably. Should waive if we're able to do that. So I will report back, but I wanted to make you aware of. Opportunities to try and make this payment a little more friendly for our taxpayers. And again, that applies to residential, not apply to businesses. Last slide, the food service budget, column to the left shows last year, and if you. Go all the way down to the bottom, change in net assets, a loss of forty-four thousand, one column to the right. The original budget for this year was to have a excess of revenue over expense of fourteen thousand. But due to what has happened in terms of school closure. Projecting a loss of ninety thousand for this year, while we have brought down our expenses. Or operating revenues really have, you know, plummeted at a, a higher pace. Looking to next year. A far right column, go all the way down to the change in net assets, it's pretty much of a break even. The reason why those numbers are negative at the bottom is as a proprietary fund, we have to recognize. The, the net op- obligation, other post-employment benefits, as well as the pension obligation on their statements. They actually have a positive fund balance, but. You know, technically based upon their characterizations proprietary, we do recognize those obligations. In contrast to the general fund where we only do that as an, at a entity-wide basis. So again, looking to next year to break even. And we'll address price increases as we get closer to June. Any questions?
Well, Anne, I, I don't necessarily have a question so much as a, maybe a comment or. A, a desire for feedback from my, my colleagues. About whether or not we can move forward and incorporate the budget cuts that the administration reflected in this presentation. Into our proposed final budget that we'll be discussing and voting on in May. I have that right, we're going to be voting on it in May, is that correct, Anne, the, the proposed final budget?
In May nineteenth, we'll go on the proposed final budget.
Yeah, so I guess at this point, I'm wondering from my, my colleagues if, if we're prepared to move forward with incorporating those reductions as we move forward. Or if we're going to need some more discussion on it. Because I, I'm prepared to incorporate them, I think that there's a lot of things that are challenging in this time. That we, we certainly don't want to pursue, I think some of these cuts, especially those that affect people's livelihoods. But we are the central piece of this community. And it's important that the district's fiscal operations are, are protected. And, and that's what we're trying to do here and we're trying to ensure that both the vitality of our program. But also the efficiency in which we provide it is, is protected and I think that's what we're trying to do and I think that's what we're. Getting closer to being at this point, and I, I think that we need to get some. Maybe closure around whether we're prepared to move forward with these ones, if not more.
Yeah, I, this is Dave, I, I've had a chance to participate in the business function committee meetings and, and hear some of the, the more detailed descriptions of everything that went. Into come up, coming up with these reductions, and I know it, it hasn't come easy, but you know, I think considering the circumstances. You know, I think it's important for us to, to really take the, make the hard decisions and move forward, I think these are. These are fairly modest. When I think about some of the potential consequences of what we're looking at in terms of revenue loss. I, I'm hopeful, I'm optimistic that this will be the extent of what we have to do. But yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of it, I'm prepared to, to agree to incorporate this into the next budget. Are there any other board members who would, who have any concerns or would be in opposition to incorporating the recommendations?
Dave, if I can say, this is Anne. I, I appreciate all the work that was done in presenting this and. The only thing I'm a little concerned with, and it was brought up at the committee meeting regarding the high school emotional support teacher. Other than that, I, I'm comfortable with everything else, I don't know if that means just me talking to more people about that. I understand what Dr. Phillips said and, and I appreciate his comments at the committee meeting. But that's the only thing I'm uncomfortable with, otherwise I'm a go for moving forward with it.
Thanks, Anne. Any other comments from board members?
Yeah, I guess, oh, go ahead, Harry.
No, no, go ahead, John, that's not a problem.
This may seem kind of obvious, so I, I'm going to point out something obvious, but I think these are the kinds of cuts that we would have had to make anyway. If not this year or next year, the year after, and I think the situation involving the. The, the health of the nation, the health of the world has kind of pushed us to making these decisions now. The pain is going to be the same, but I think it adds a sense of urgency and the risk of sounding like a Pollyanna. It, it may nudge us to do things that we would have had to do anyway. But maybe not until next year or the year after, and so I. I, I think it's a good thing, if there's something that, something good that comes out of all of this, it's making the kinds of, of decisions that are, are difficult, that are painful. And I too think we should, we should move forward with them.
I agree with John on that one as well, you know, a hundred percent, I think we definitely need to make sure that we're doing. Make sure that we're doing our due diligence, you know, for the community in terms of. You know, making sure that we'll, you know, that we're taking care of these things, these are tough decisions. You know, that's kind of why we're all here to to do those particular processes and. He's right, we would have had to have done some of these cuts eventually anyway. We're still not out of the woods, so that's still another thing there as well, but this is a, you know, a one step forward, so I think this, this is a. Definitely something we need to to go forward with.
So I I also support these cuts and I heard, you know, more of an explanation about why, why. They made these, suggested these cuts and how they're going to compensate for any areas that are cut, so I was satisfied that, you know. The academics aren't going to suffer and, you know, it's going to help our budget, but it it's not going to be detrimental. Because they thought about ways, they well, first of all, well thought out cuts and they thought about how to compensate. You know, to fill in the gaps if there are any gaps for it, so I would support this, the cuts, recommended cuts.
Any other comments? Okay, Mrs. Gaidish, I'm not hearing any dissent largely. And I think, you know, we have a preponderance of board members who are expressing encouragement for you to move forward. With the development of the budget based upon your, the recommendations that were presented this evening.
Dave, if I can, I I just, I think it needs to be stated, how, the amount of work that Anne put in. I mean, yeah, all the administrators pitched in and then we did our piece, but Anne Gaidish, you know, we all know how hard she works. She worked extra hard on this and and I just want to make it stated, what a great job you did, Anne, we all appreciate it.
And and not just the presentation, but I I mean, or the work, but I mean, the presentation was excellent too, I mean, it was really concise, it was understandable. Very clear and your ex, and your additional explanation of of the recommendations was, you know, really well done. So I'd have to agree with Dr. Phillips and I think we all appreciate it, all, every board member here, so thank you.
I just want to echo that quick and and say that I feel the same way, I I'm probably. If not at the top of the list, pretty close to the top for being pain in the rear number one for Anne, I saw her smile.
You're at the top, you're at the top.
I'm at the very top. She is a consummate professional and I think she very much cares about the people in this district, its employees and the residents. And we're very well served by your efforts here, Anne, and and I just want to say thank you.
Welcome.
So is there anything else that Mrs. Gaidish that you need from us, are we able to move on in the agenda?
We can move on.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody, I think it was well worth the time, I mean, these were excellent presentations this evening and I know they're time consuming. But I think we're, I think we feel a lot better in making these decisions when we get such outstanding information from our administrative team. So again, I'll I'll take the, make the effort to move on in the agenda. And I want to remind folks that this is a consent agenda. That means that we're, we're going to be either summarizing or grouping items together for a vote. And if there's anyone on the board that would like us to pull apart any item that that's. In any particular section for a separate vote or for additional discussion, just please signal that going into the. Into the boat, so we're going to start with the the board minutes. So it's recommended we approve the minutes of the workshop meeting and voting meeting of March.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Treasurer's report. It's recommended that the board approve the treasurer's report and the payment requests as stated in the agenda.
So move.
Second.
With emotion.
Give it to John, I don't need it.
The motion and a second, Mr. Fidler moved, Mr. Aaron seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 The opposed. Motion carries. Board policies. Let's take this in two sections, and we'll start off with second reading, it's recommended the board of directors approve policies listed. One through seven in the agenda for second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Policies listed in the agenda, eight through 15 are for first reading. And I know we have made a minor change to. A few of the, or one of these at least, and I think we talked about that at our workshop meeting and then I just want to indicate that. I think it was Dr. Haring who had asked for some consideration for modification of some language in the. Relations with parent organizations, that's policy nine 15, item 14 in the agenda. And and considering this is first reading, we'll, we'll take a look at those, those recommendations this month. And incorporate those into the second reading for for May.
Dave, if if I can just jump in quick, I I'm. And this is really going to throw a heck up in things, but in policy 909 that we just approved, I thought that we had made a change. To include fire companies as well as fire departments in municipal government relations and that is not reflected in the policy that's on the agenda.
Yeah, well, we, I mean, that was intended to be there, it was actually submitted and for some reason. If it's not there, it should, it should have been, no, the one I see. I'm looking at my copy of the agenda and it has been modified. I'm seeing police departments.
I apologize, I'm looking at the 14th because I was referring to a previous month's. Presentation from Anne, I apologize, that's my mistake, I'm sorry.
Okay, good, I'm glad, so we're good to go with that, so we're into the policies listed eight through 15 on the agenda. Is there any further discussion on any of those policies? I'm sorry, I'm going to make a a motion that we approve policies eight through 15 in the in the agenda.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, so we're going to move into business functions committee, Mr. Aaron's.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger, to prioritize on the advice of bond counsel, the roll call vote for the parameters resolution. I'm just going to ask that we're going to vote on that separately here, so it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following business functions items, number one and number three.
Second.
We go motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
It is recommended by the board of school, that the board of school directors approve the following business functions items, a parameters resolution to issue debt series 2020. In an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $25 million, the funds will provide for the following, a refunding of the school district's outstanding general obligation. Bond series 2013, 2015 A, 2015 B, paying the costs and expenses and issuance of the debt obligation and this would be by a roll call vote.
Mr. Miller?
Do we get, do we get a second on that motion, please?
I'll second it.
Roll call, Mrs. Gaidish.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Stratton?
Aye.
Dr. McLendon?
Yes.
Dr. Hamburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Aaron?
Aye.
Dr. Haring?
Aye.
Mr. Fidler?
Aye.
Eight zero.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaidish, and thanks, Mr. Aaron's.
Real quick, Dave, are we going to have committee reports at the end of this?
Yes.
Oh, okay, well, then I will defer my additional comments until that point.
Okay, great. So we're going to move into personnel committee, Mrs. Wilson.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Resins, appointments, leaves of absence and course requests.
Second.
A motion and a second, any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries eight zero.
Dr. Hamburger, I know Ms. Harris is on the line, she's participated through the meeting. We're all very excited that she's becoming a part of our school district. She made it through a series of interviews where I think she impressed everyone through every level. And I know she's listening and we'd like to give her a chance maybe to speak for herself, Don.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips, I appreciate it, I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to be able to hop on board over there at Exeter, I'm. Super excited to get started, I am really looking forward to being able to serve the district team and the Exeter community. I'm also looking forward to meeting everyone in person when this quarantine is over. I I do believe School Call Valley might be holding me for just a little bit, but if you need anything from me in the meantime or you. Think I can be helpful in any way, please feel free to reach out to me and thank you again and I'll see everybody soon.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks, Don, welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris, welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Great to hear from you. We're looking forward to it. Okay, if we can move on. In our agenda, we're going to move to student functions, Mrs. Stratton.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the following student function items, one, two and three. And I just want to note that three is an addition from last week.
Was that a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion?
Just a quest, just a question, the the Deveraux. Agreement, is that, is that a residential treatment facility or is that, will that be done on kind of an outpatient basis?
This specific is outpatient, they do have residential there, but this student is not residential.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Stratton. Athletic committee. Mr. Aaron's, you want to speak to this, I know Mr. Japin is not available.
So I know that one of the things that we'll be discussing before the school year ends is the increase or lack thereof of the activity fee. Other than that, I have no report.
We we have an item on the agenda under the athletic committee, we actually have two items. Under the athletic committee, if you want to, if you want to open that up and and take a look at those.
I am familiar with these one. Oh. I'm sorry, I I must have missed this when I went for the first time, we apologize. Is recommended that the board of school directors approves the following athletic committee items, one and two, and then. Upon a second, I just want to add a little piece about number two and John, maybe you can chip in as well with that.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, who was that from?
That was McLendon.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Any discussion?
On item two. This is to. I'm I'm concerned about. Going ahead with this, given the. What some people like to call the optics of spending lots of money when there are so many people hurting terribly financially. Because of the pandemic. I guess that says it, I I'm just really, I'm really reluctant to saddle the taxpayers with. Pardon me, I have to keep getting rid of this picture of all of us so I can read. To spend $650,000. Just doesn't, it's not sitting well.
John, do you mind if I jump in here quick?
Sure. I don't mind at all.
So. I think some of the background and and Dr. Phillips or Anne, feel free to correct me if I have anything missed here. Some of the reason that this was moved up, because originally this was a part of our schedule of work to be done in terms of capital improvements. Next year, now the reason that it's been moved up was under consideration to. The district's facilities not being open to the public this summer in light of the coronavirus. And and seeing that this would be probably a prime opportunity to have this repair and and correction work done. Now, rather than doing it next year and some of the desire there is that any rental fees that we would have. Been able to receive back from any organizations that would rent the track next summer would not be. Impeded if we did the work this summer because it's more than likely that we won't have much of our facilities open to. Organizations like that and we wouldn't perceive an entirely large amount of revenue. Granted that the amount of revenue that we would receive from these types of rentals is not significant. To the level of our multimillion dollar budget, but it is an important piece of revenue that we expect annually. And I think some of the desire here is, is if we're already planning to do this work. Then why not do it at the most advantageous time for the district's long term. Impact, so. I I'm anxious to hear if there are other thoughts from the board members, but I guess in my mind, I would agree, John, it's it's probably not the best. Optical situation, but in terms of what we need to continue to offer and I think part of what our desire is, is not only for our gym classes. But also for our extracurricular activities, to have a facility like this, to be able to utilize regularly as part of our regular instruction. And our extracurricular programs and we're going to need to have some type of a track and field. If we continue to offer those things and I I think that. Those are staples of public school districts and I think that we need to ensure that we're continuing to maintain our facilities. So I I think that this is a a good investment, I know that there was some discussion about whether we wanted to do. The 10 year versus the 20 year option. Personally, I think, you know, while it is more expensive, we do have the capital funds to afford this. And on top of that, we are getting the most bang for our buck if we're doing a longer term project. Rather than doing the shorter term one, those are just my thoughts at this point, I'm I'm happy to hear the thoughts of others and and John, maybe you want to. Respond to a few of the things that I said, I'm not sure, so I'll I'll end there.
Can I, can I just add a few things?
So go ahead, Anne.
I'd just like to add to that, there's also a liability aspect because I believe it was mentioned that that there's a hole. Or something in the area that needs to be repaired, but now that we know it's there, if someone gets injured. I I I wouldn't want that on my shoulders. I understand what you're saying, John, I I agree with that aspect, but as Hunter said, it it does make sense for it to be done now. So I'm in support of that.
And just maybe I had what Dr. Haring mentioned. If I can, just to add on to what Dr. Haring mentioned, the obvious safety issue is there. And if we weren't going to fix the issue, there's a real good possibility we would. And if we weren't going to fix the issue, there's a real good possibility we would not be able to hold track and field events at our facility. So that would involve additional costs of transportation of our students on a daily basis for practice, as well as competitions. So, you know, correctly stated, there is a safety issue there that I think also has to be.
Well, but would it, would it cost us $650,000 to, to fix the safety issue?
But, look, if I could just mention, I think in part of our conversation about that, it was, it was a situation where we recognized that we've already made efforts, you know, to kind of make spot repairs. And they really are not, they're not, they're not permanent. There are things that continue to be a problem, the delamination of the track, the irregular surface, the potential, you know, harm for, for anyone using it to be injured. You know, when you look at it, you know, systemically through the entire, you know, area of the track, it, it, it really makes a lot of sense to, to kind of do the repairs now that we have the money and the capital project. I mean, initially, we, I think we considered, you know, deferring it primarily because we didn't realize, I think, the extent of the safety issues that were involved. I think now that we know a little bit more about it, now that we're sort of been, we've been told, you know, what the conditions of the track are, it's, I think it's more important that we take that seriously and, and move forward in a timely way.
I would agree with that. I just had a question for Anne. Do you count for this $649,000 in her latest budget projection that she gave us tonight?
Yeah, this would be, this would come out of the capital project funds.
Okay.
We had reviewed that. Losing track of all the meetings that we've been having, but it is a different fund. We did talk about waiting until 21, 22, but with more information that's you know, brought forward and the timing of it. It makes sense, but it was slated originally for 21, 22. Based upon circumstances, we'll move it to the 2021 budget, and that will be approved as well in May, although this would be more of a ratification because we're starting it before the 19th of May.
But the point is, it's not coming out of the general fund budget that we just discussed. It would come out of our capital budget.
Just so I understand, I'm still learning about budgets. I apologize, but i- is this in effect money that we've already spent, at least on paper? Better one way to put it?
Well, I don't know how, whether saying money we've spent on paper, I mean, we list various capital projects, and I've showed them that are on the horizon, and this deed was one of them, and it's at the end of its life.
But I think what, what he's asking, I mean, this is not, this is not part of next year's budget. This is money that was set aside in a, in a capital fund for projects such as these that's available to us to use to repair and to maintain our facilities. Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what I was looking for. Thanks, Dave.
Anne, as a quick clarification point, if we were to approve this project, the funds would come out of our, would it be our net assignments on the budget spreadsheet that we were looking at this evening?
No, we were only looking at general fund this evening.
Okay, so, sorry.
The funds will come out of our capital project fund. If I, I can bring up that spreadsheet if you'd like me to.
So it's not reflected on any of the fund balances that we were looking at this evening in tonight's budget?
No, if you recall, I, yes.
Okay, no problem. Here's another way of asking my question. Is this, is this something that the taxpayer has already paid for or will pay for?
The funds have already been collected.
Okay.
It's, it's already in a pot of money.
Got it. Okay, that's, that's what I've been struggling, that's what I've been struggling to ask, Bob. I just I'm just waiting for, you know, my neighbors and friends and, and people I know in the community to say, oh, so now what, how's this gonna affect my tax bill? And I can say, it's, it's money that's already been collected. In effect, you, Mr. Taxpayer, Ms. Taxpayer, you've already paid for this. Is that a correct way of putting it?
Yes, right? Anne, I mean, it's already been, it's already been collected.
The capital project funds are the result of moving excess, excess funds in the general fund from prior years into capital projects in order to address things like this. We also have capital project funds, which are the result of issuing new money when we do a bond refunding for new money for a major construction project. So these capital project funds are exclusively for projects such as these.
And it's money that's already been collected, John. You could, you would be correct in stating that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question of Mr. LaGaff regarding this? The, with what he sent to us, it says that they intend to end the day, August 7. Is that anything to interfere with the end at all, or will there be a delicate on that possibly?
You were really choppy on that one, Dr. Aaron. Could you try it again?
Anne, do you want to try to type your question? Because it was really hard to understand.
I, I think I heard her. I think she's asking if this is gonna be done by the time the band starts, and the answer would be yes. It's something I'll have to talk with Mrs. Selke about in terms of the timing and how the project moves along. As long as, obviously, we get some good weather here coming up, that, that end date could be even earlier.
Is it possible as well that if there is poor weather, bad conditions, that it will extend it as well?
From my understanding, I don't obviously do this a lot. I think Mr. Perzuay could help me out here, but I think some of that poor weather is already based into this August 7 date of completion.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there any additional discussion? Just wondering whether we need to separate these two items on the agenda, or if there is anyone who feels compelled to kind of vote against this or abstain item we just, we've just been talking about, we can separate. Otherwise, we can take them as a group. Just need to hear from somebody.
Take them as a pair.
Take them as a pair? Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second, I believe.
Yes, yep.
And so we're concluding discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries eight zero. Thank you, Mr. 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 Aaron's for that. Oh, we're gonna move to Committee Reports, and we're gonna start with the Business Functions Committee, Mr. Aaron's.
I'm back again, so.
We're back.
Okay, never mind.
Go ahead, Sharon. I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm getting ahead of what, what we're doing. It's fine.
So two, two things. The big, the biggest thing that we have to try and figure out, what part of the discussion for business functions as we were moving forward with this budget reduction process and how we started the year, was that at some point, the board would take ownership, for lack of a better term, of the proposed final budget. And that's kind of what we have nearly a final product on right now. We were looking at that this evening, and we incorporated those reductions into our proposal. And part of the discussion that we would need to have, and I'm gonna propose how we would go about doing that, is how we go about taking that ownership and presenting this to the community and getting feedback. Originally, if you recall, we were discussing having a physical town hall, much like the style that we were having earlier in the year and that we have annually, or, or I think we have it twice a year, where we have community forums for the board. So at this point, because of the challenges with the coronavirus, what I would like to propose is that we would either individual board members or the entire board would make some type of Zoom presentation that we record. That would be a short introduction to the Zoom presentation that the administration gave us on the budget, and that that would really be released publicly, and that we would also schedule a town hall that would be conducted virtually. I don't know if we need all board members to be active participants. We can certainly do that if we would like. Or I'm more than comfortable being a part of that with a few others, if, if that's the route we would like to go down, so that we can give the community an opportunity to give us feedback ahead of that either proposed final budget vote, or after we've made that decision, so that we can get feedback on this decision. Because the reductions we're talking about are significant. They're definitely, I think, a change from our past practice. I think that's fair to say. And I think on top of that, there's likely to be a significant portion of the community that would like to express, to express an opinion on our rate of taxation, which we're going to have to decide later this year. And I'm sure there will also be interest in, from our associations and our employees to share their thoughts about some of these reductions that will affect them. So that would be my proposal, just to summarize it again, that we would do some type of recording that would be short and added to the administration's prepared recording and release that to the public and to our staff members, and that we would also host some type of telephone town hall where people can either call in or submit comments that we can answer their questions.
Any feedback?
I think it's important, considering the the number and the nature of the cuts we're considering, I think it's important to hear from from our customers and the people who are footing the bill.
Yeah, in some respects, too, I, I think doing it in a, in a sort of a electronic format maybe makes it more accessible to more of the community that came out at our, our board budget meetings that we have with the community, you know, a few months ago. So, you know, I'm, I like the idea, because I think it is important to kind of make sure that we communicate as broadly as we can, as openly as we can, and give folks a chance to kind of weigh in on what they want to see, you know, in their school district. This is their school district. And this is going to impact, you know, how things operate here. And I think it's important that they know what, what the direction we're going in and why.
Yeah, I agree as well. I think it's a good idea.
So with, with, with that being said, I, I don't want to cut anybody off if they want to add to this. I guess what I would like to find out, if there's anybody who wants to be directly involved in this, other than myself, what I would do is, if there is anybody, we would probably work, my preference would be to not have a quorum so that we can work and answer questions. Well, let me be quiet for a moment. Is there any, is there anybody who wants to be directly involved in, in pulling this together?
Hunter, I'll, I'll be glad to be part of it.
Okay.
I'll throw my hat in the ring, too.
Essentially, that's the Business Functions Committee right there.
Okay, if, if there's nobody else, you know, what I would, what I'll start doing is working with Dave and John to have that recording over the administration's presentation. We'll share that with the community, and then we'll also look at scheduling that telephone town hall and advertise that on social media and all that jazz, and try and figure out with our IT department how to make that work best. And then we'll also discuss whether or not we're gonna try and have the whole board present for that in a participant fashion. And I'm sure we're also gonna need our administrators to assist with that as well.
Okay, sounds good.
I would just request that it either be live, like these meetings, or recorded, so that if people can attend, that they could, that which I'm sure you've already thought of that.
Yeah, I think that we can do both of those, and, and I had not, so I really appreciate you saying that, Michelle. So I think we can do both, have it recorded, and then also have that town hall live.
Anything else, Mr. Aaron? So does that conclude your report?
The only other thing that I, I want to add is, you know, I, I just want to say that there's been a lot of work that the Business Functions Committee has done. I'm sure not all of it was tremendously effective to what would have been different had the administration been working on this without us. But I really appreciate the administration's cooperation, and I think, you know, we're, we're in a much better position than we, than we started with. And I think a lot of that has to go out to the work that the admin has done, and that they've respected the desires of the board. And I think that the board's been more engaged this year in, in making, making these happen. So I just wanted to say thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Mr. Aaron's. Okay, we're gonna move on in the agenda to Curriculum Committee, and that's Dr. McLendon.
Okay, so we have one thing to vote on. It's, it's recommended that the Board of School Directors authorize the Assistant Superintendent to submit to Pennsylvania Department of Ed contingent on federal and state funding the following grants for the 2020, 2021 school year. Title one, two, three, four, and Ready to Learn.
I'll second.
We have a second? Any, any discussion?
Is this kind, is this the kind of thing, Sharon, that goes on every year at this time? Is this, do we do this in the spring of every year, these kinds of grants?
As far as I know, but Dr. Winters could answer that.
Yes, we do, Mr. Fiddler. This approval happens annually, and it basically just allows me, on behalf of the district, to submit those grants for us.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries eight zero. Thanks, Dr. McLendon. Is, oh, I'm, is there anything else that you'd like to report?
Yes, I have the report from our meeting.
Okay.
Curriculum Committee met last Tuesday, April 14. We first of all had a presentation, I mean, well, presentation by Dr. Phillips and Mr. Campbell, and they addressed the concerns about the graduation options and ways to honor the seniors, and they've already both talked about that, you know, what the plan is for that. And then Dr. Winters presented phase two of the instructional plan. And I, I just want to thank Dr. Winters and Dr. Phillips and the whole team for putting together a very thought, well-thought-out and comprehensive plan to address all areas of the distance learning. So that face, I'm gonna, there's a PowerPoint. I don't, Dr. Winters, was that sent out to others or, or your PowerPoint that you did?
It wasn't, it wasn't, but I can, but I can send it out to the full board tomorrow. That's not a problem.
Well, I mean, I don't know if, if, if the full board wants it, but I, I pulled a couple of things from here, and if I miss anything that you wanted to add, Dr. Winters, feel free. So the play, the phase two of the instructional plan began on April 6. And in that plan, all the specific things were outlined as, in terms of like, how many minutes are gonna be spent on lessons delivered to students. So for example, the, there's a, I don't have the number here, but a certain amount of minutes were gonna be spent on English, math, English and math on a daily basis at the K through four level. And with additional work in science, social studies, and the specials. And in grades five through 12, there are three 20 to 40 minute lessons per class per period per week. The Dr. Winters also discussed the grading procedures. So in K through four, there's going to be a narrative report for the report cards. Grades five through eight is pass fail. And then in grade nine through 12, they're going to get a percentage grade. And there are no final exams at the junior high or the or the high school. See. So also outlined were the expectations for the students for completing work, for attendance, and for accountability. And then guidelines were presented for the special populations for ESL. Documents can be translated into their language with teachers providing support. The gifted students have enrichment lessons embedded in their regular lessons, and they're also receiving support from the gifted teachers. And IP students are receiving their individualized instructions per their plan and for their needs, along with, you know, the support of the teachers. And I think this was already discussed a bit about the technological support. But they have a frequently asked questions. And if students are still having trouble logging on or with the technology, they can submit a support ticket. And there's also limited drive, drive up support that's going to be at the Loush Building. They can make arrangements, you know, by calling in to if they need extra help. Blue, Dr. Phillips mentioned prior that there were 500 Chromebooks that were distributed to students. And there was some information about the offer, the free internet offer from Service Electric that for for 90 days. And as far as testing, Department PDE canceled all of the state testing, the PSSA at Keystone. But AP testing will still be given to students, but it's going to be done remotely. They'll take it take place, you know, they'll do that at home. So I think that's about it. Did you want to add? Did you want to add anything, Dr. Winters?
That was that was pretty, pretty comprehensive and a pretty good summary from last week. We just continue on the curriculum and instruction side to just be very dynamic and very flexible. Our principals are constantly looking at how things are going and making adjustments. And as those adjustments need to be communicated to families, we're making sure that we're doing that in a very thoughtful way. But we feel really good about the overall structure of the plan. And I think our attendance numbers, at least in the early going, are demonstrating that a vast majority of our students are getting on accessing the work and getting the support they need.
So I know the formal attendance start, was that this week that that started?
So it was so so we so we tracked attendance this week for last week. So the week of the 14th was the first week where we tracked attendance. So teachers entered attendance for last week, yesterday, on Monday of this week.
And so with that, did that's also include, you know, the amount of work if they're completing all the assignments? So all of that was incorporated into that?
So it's a it's a combination of logging on and also work completion. I know at the high school level, they used a slightly more specific metric because you have, you know, in some instances, eight courses. And so if a student was not logging in or not doing any work in two or more courses, then, you know, they use that as their, you know, metric for deeming a child absent. You know, whereas at the elementary level, it's more just accessing Schoology, logging on, and also completion versus incompletion of work.
Right. So that was a summary. But if you want any more specifics, you know, about it, it's very well written and and, you know, in the PowerPoint. And then I know that you you got the numbers about how many students are logging logging on. And, you know, if you just let us know at another time, like those students, it's only a few percent. But, you know, you know, have those students give us an update at some point about whether those students were reached and if they're working also. But thank you really. You you this teach everybody. I said this at the curriculum meeting, but I'm going to say it again. I know that there's a lot of of work and it's done in a different way. And our teachers and everybody has really, you know, they they rose to to the occasion to be able to do this. And I think, Dr. Phillips, I liked your analogy of, did you say you're building the plane while we're flying it? Is that it?
Yes.
Yeah. And so and it really is like, you know, it's like all hands on deck and and you have to have this done, you know, today. So I, you know, really do want to emphasize how much I appreciate that, all the work that everybody's doing. And I included the parents because I know the parents have a lot of extra work to do now with students. So, okay, thank you. That concludes my report.
I'm just a thought to that there. The slides that were just or the images from the website that were just shown on the slide here were fantastic. I hadn't seen them, so I don't know if they've been put out there in any fashion, like if they've been shared on Facebook or if the principals have shared them, if they have like a Twitter account or you know, if we could email this information to parents. But, you know, just in hearing moms talk, I feel like this the technology piece, a lot of parents don't know what to do and they don't know where to go for help. So they're asking their friends. And this is all the information that they need to know. And it's beautifully organized that, you know, if there's any way that we can kind of share this other than on the website, because I don't know how many people actually go to the website, unfortunately. It's good information. And I just like to see if we could share that in a different format to get more people aware of it.
I think I think that Dr. Phillips did share that PowerPoint. It went out to all the families in an email.
It did.
Right in the early beginning, like, right? It was one of like the first, like when we said this is how we're going to roll it out, that was the email. And this PowerPoint was attached to that email.
Yes, we could certainly put it out again. I mean, we just, I'll be really honest with you. I'm I'm a little bit. That's why my my updates are are a lot less than they were in the beginning. I'm a little afraid of saturation at this point where parents are not looking. I mean, Mrs. Stratton just said it. Nobody's looking at our website. That's where they should all be going for information. Every time I put something, an update out, I I direct people back to our website. So I don't want to overload people, but I think this is certainly something that we could send out again this weekend.
And I'm thinking, even if it's not an email, that's fine. I mean, I know I felt that way in the beginning, you know, there was just so much information. So that obviously I missed it. But just this screenshot, just this blue image as a post on Facebook, I think would, you know, it's it's very direct. You know, they don't have to read through a bunch of stuff to get to this. It's it's right there. It's very obvious. And you know, it's got the phone numbers and who you call. And I don't know. I just think that the one before this, this one here, I think, is just general information. But there was one about that one there.
We actually, we actually did send this out.
Get that done. Okay, Mr. Way?
Yeah, we actually did send this out to this exact information was also sent out to parents. Just that information by email as well. But we could certainly do it again.
We do it on our social media as well.
Yeah, unfortunately, people aren't paying attention to their entire email, but they pay attention on Facebook.
Okay, can we move on in the agenda? I'm going to move on to Facilities Committee, Mr. Fidler.
Thanks, Dave. We had a meeting with AEM Architects, and it was really a good meeting for me to get familiar with something I'm not familiar with, and that is the Transportation Center and the and the project that we've been talking about. It was pretty much a continuation or picking up where we left off in 2014. When the the center didn't go through. The the engineer architect gave a very good presentation. And we're still looking at up to four bays. We're still looking at a wash bay. We're looking at a a meeting area. We're looking at parking. Nothing much has changed substantially. I I tried to make the point that, given where we are and given the reaction to the project six years ago, that it behooves us to watch costs, but also to give Rick Wegman and his drivers what they need. I I think we're we're all, I hope we're all on the same page that we need to recognize the quality service that they're providing to the district. That was reinforced by the report that was done by the ad hoc committee and by the consultant, rather, under the guidance of the ad hoc committee. And I think going ahead with a perhaps a trimmed down, slimmed down version that still gives Rick and his folks what they need is is what we ought to be doing. And by the way, the to answer the $64,000 question. According to my notes, what Phil said was that the the construction costs are somewhere between 2.4 and 2.5 million. But those are subject to can be some trimming based on the size of a of a meeting room, a gathering room, size of bathrooms. And so I don't think we're, I didn't prepare anything for a vote tonight. This was just to to bring the board up to speed and to include with that brief report. My initial recommendation would be to support this and certainly don't want to do anything this year. I don't think that's in the cards anyway. So it would be the earliest would be to to start something, get the ball rolling next year. Dave, is that pretty much captured? Did I? Did I leave anything major out of that?
Yeah, I mean, that was, I think that's a nice summary. I we're we're taking this, I believe, one step at a time. And we are giving some consideration to an alternative site that was initially proposed back in 2014. And we're we're making attempts to try to work with the township and the Township Zoning Hearing Board to 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 reconsider options associated with the original plan that was situated at at a Watten. And as as you mentioned, John, you know, the importance is to really take a real critical look at the the original proposal to make sure it's not deemed to have a level of extravagance that maybe the original plan appeared to have. So but again, this, we're at a very preliminary stage. I think we're making adaptations to the to the architectural rendering, rendering, you know, of the of the proposed facility. And trying to understand, you know, what we have to do in order to submit an application for a variance for the location.
Right. And one, I know one of the options that Phil talked about was that while a a an asphalt or blacktop coating for the entire project is certainly desirable, it is possible in the interest of saving money to have gravel or stone, at least to park to park the buses. The downside of that is in in snow, plowing through stone is a lot harder than than it would be on asphalt. But these are the kinds of things we're looking at. And and I'm pleased to report that everybody is also looking at that, that we're all, we seem to be willing as a small group anyway, to to consider those those edits to the to the original plan. And Phil seemed Phil seemed to buy into that as well. And I guess in addition to Exeter, there's also a pen dot consideration, which I don't fully understand, but something about establishing a clear sight line, but when the buses come come in and out of the property onto 562, that doesn't create a any kind of safety risk or for motorists or for the drivers for that matter. Any any questions or comments?
I, John, I just have one question if I could. It was my understanding from some things that had been mentioned at previous meetings that a significant portion of the project was wrapped up in site preparation costs. But I thought I heard you say that the construction cost could be 2.4 to 3.6 million dollars. And I guess when I'm thinking about this, that site work cost would be separate from the construction cost. Do you know what what if there's a difference between what's included there or if if that site work would be separate from that construction cost that you're referencing?
Here's my understanding, Hunter. And Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, site work was
Did we lose you, John?
That was a real cliffhanger.
Project would be in the Did I? Did I get that right, Dave? One point for the site preparation?
John, you're cutting it and out, but I don't know. I I I don't think we heard your comments there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was holding my notebook. Maybe maybe that got in the way. But the site work would be around 1.7 million. Did that come through?
Yeah.
Yes.
And that the total cost would be in the 2.4, 2.5 million range.
So physical structure construction would be the difference between 2.4 and 1.7 million?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Whoa, I don't, I don't know if, okay, I'm I'm going to be interested to hear more about that because that is
I'm assuming, I'm assuming they're preliminary figures. But I I know that the original proposal for that location, and this was several years ago, was about three, 3.5 plus billion.
Phil, mine about those numbers that he said were based on the cost from a few years ago. I received this afternoon a couple of proposals from them on how to move forward fee wise. So is the next step for the board to possibly in May approve utilizing their services to do some redesign to get us to the point of going for variance? I think the board has to approve you know, them to do do the reset and and redo some plans.
Right, do the reset so that so that we have something to take to the township.
Correct.
Yes, I mean, I I think that's that's the Facilities Committee recommendation. That's my understanding of the Facilities Committee recommendation.
Right. And it would. It would be great if we could have that initial look at the, what Phil and his group pair have an initial look at that at the next Facilities Committee meeting and then present that to the board in in May.
I will send it this week so that I could review it and
Okay, thank you, Ann. The other item, Dave, that I have on here, I guess there's two. The SOS proposal, would you, would you take a minute or two to to go over that?
Uh, yeah, the SOS proposal was primarily an opportunity for us to take a a closer look at our facilities department, how it operates, whether it's sufficient sufficiently staffed, whether there are operational protocols in place that make it operate in a in a smooth, efficient manner. And and help us understand as a board the strengths and and needs of our Facilities Department. There was a cost associated with that of about $10,000 that we had a chance to actually meet with the folks who would conduct that. They are they're seasoned facilities folks. They've done the the job. You know, both of the people involved that we spoke to were, you know, former facilities directors in in school districts for several years and very familiar with how they operate. So the, you know, the question was really whether or not we would want to pursue it with this particular organization or whether we wanted to consider other options out there. And I think Mrs. Gaidish might have been investigating some other potential options for us in terms of consultants who might be able to do similar work. I think PASBO was one that we talked about.
Right. I haven't received a reply yet.
So I think with that, we're probably not in a position, Mr. Fidler, to to kind of make any recommendations there. But you know, once we hear from PASBO. But, you know, once we hear from PASBO and if there's any, any other contractors that we may want to look at, we want to, may want to bring this back to the board in May.
Okay. And then the other, by the way, any questions on that? Sorry, didn't mean to jump ahead. The other item then, and Dave, if I could rely on you again, was an update on administration building project, which is still at the very, very starting phases. I seem to remember a $5,000 figure for a study that would really focus on the energy needs of the kind of trans, transformation we're considering.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, McClure gave us a, a, a detailed description of what they would do in terms of conducting a study of that building to help us understand how we may actualize some, some savings and benefits by reconfiguring the HVAC, HVAC in that building. We, we have, I, I think, I'm not sure exactly, maybe 25 to 30 employees who work in that building. It's, the building is designed to accommodate over 500 people, you know, as a, as a school building. And so we're not operating that building efficiently in terms of how we, we heat and cool the building. And, and there may be some other, some other inefficiencies as well. We were also talking long term and, and, and many of these ideas are becoming much more, I think, or let's say, much less feasible because of the current economic circumstances. But one of the ideas was to try to, you know, consider some renovations to the building that would allow it to allow us to upgrade it to, to more, a more appropriate administrative facility. We had always kind of tried to maintain the building as something that we may want to convert back as a school building. It really doesn't seem to have that potential, nor do we seem to have that need when we look at, you know, our forecast for enrollment projections. So I think our way of thinking essentially was, can we utilize the building better? Can we do it more efficiently? Can we actualize some, some savings in terms of energy costs by doing some studies and by moving forward at some point? But I think the other thing, John, that, you know, you and I, I think we talked about at the Facilities Committee was, you know, the idea that maybe the time's not right for this. Because any study that we do would sort of assume that we would move forward with maybe some actual work. And it seems unlikely that we would be doing that again, under the circumstances with a facility that is not, where it's not absolutely necessary. Yes, there would be, there would be savings in terms of energy costs, but you know, the cost of construction and the work that we were anticipating doing would most likely be something we would want to maybe defer. At, at least I think that was the thinking of the committee at the time, so.
I, I, I agree, Dave, and I think well, the situation is sort of dictating our priorities right now. And this might be, this might be better looked at a year, two years down the road when we've, when we've gotten through this current crisis and, and things, the, the ship begins to right itself again.
Right.
All right, that, that concludes my report unless there are questions. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Fidler. We're gonna move on to Personnel Committee, Mrs. Wilson.
I don't have anything at this time.
Thanks, Mrs. Wilson. Policy Committee, we're just finishing up on the policies, which is really terrific. I mean, we've endured four years of, of comprehensive examination and evaluation of our, of our entire board policy. And we are just finishing up with the, the first readings that we went through this, this board meeting. That'll pretty much wrap it up for, for board policy review. There may be one or two that are hanging out there that need to be modified. But other than that, we'll just be stepping back in a, a bit and not, you won't be, you won't seeing the, the full array of new policies that come forward every month. That's the, that's the extent of my report. Student Functions Committee, Mrs. Stratton.
I have nothing to report.
Thanks, Mrs. Stratton. Technology Committee, Mr. Miller.
Um, nothing really to report except, you know, definitely thank Joe Way and those guys for all their hard work, you know, the 500 Chromebooks and the internet access has, you know, been a great job. So I, I can't, you know, can't express how thankful I am for the, the whole group for all their hard work. That's all I can say.
Agreed. Thanks, Mr. Thanks, Mr. Miller. Exeter Community Education Foundation, Dr. Herring.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Hamburger. ECEF submitted their fifth grant application for Exeter Township School District in the name of ECEF on April 8th for $19,800 to AXA for two water bottle fillers per building, excluding admin building. Plus some funding for retrofit plumbing. Response will be given around July. We are told at this point, this makes for five grants in total submitted for the district. Two with Gilmore Henni for playground updates at Watten Jacksonville. One with Building and Industries for water bottle fillers. One with the Private Family Foundation for Watten Video Broadcasting Room. And one with AXA for water bottle fillers as mentioned above. And that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Herring. Berks Career and Tech Center, Joint Operating Committee, Dr. McLendon.
I do not have a report. We did not have a meeting in March and we're actually gonna have our first meeting tomorrow, you know, since this all, all happened. And I didn't get a dinner either.
Maybe you could do takeout. Thanks, Dr. McLendon. BCIU Board of Directors, we attended our first Zoom conference, BCIU Board Meeting on the 16th of this month. And the board should have all received a copy of what's happening at BCIU, which is pretty much of a summary of all of the, all of the items and topics that were discussed and covered. So I won't go into, into much detail. I will make a couple of comments about some of the things that were, that were at the, that we covered at the meeting. There was an audit report of the, the BCIU finances, which is pretty comprehensive. They have a massive budget, many employees. And many, many services. We received an overview of their virtual learning programs and the work that they've been doing since the onset of the virus and their continuity of learning plan. We went through budget considerations and, and like us, you know, they're looking at all the complexities of establishing a budget for next year, recognizing that we will be experiencing most likely some state and federal funds reduction. They're much more dependent upon state and federal funds. The, unlike us, they don't rely on property taxes. They rely upon these state and federal funds, a small part of their budget. Maybe 10 to 15% actually comes from school districts, the rest of it comes from other sources. So they have, they have pretty significant concerns about, you know, their funding and they're monitoring it very carefully. And there'll be, there'll be a, an upcoming election of board members. They are, they'll be serving three-year terms and I believe I'm up for a three-year term reelection as the board representative for Exeter. And that's, that concludes my report. Legislative Liaison, Mr. Fidler.
Just a brief report, and we all got a note today from Dr. Phillips. But just to, just to read the headline that Representative Cutler, Republican from Lancaster withdrew his amendment to House Bill 974 to freeze property taxes. I, I think Bobby forwarded a, a note from Jill Hackman at BCIU. So that obviously just the latest, the very latest, I guess it came through late yesterday on what the legislature is doing.
Yes.
Throughout the, the crisis.
Thanks, Mr. Fidler. Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Dapina, but Mr. Aaron, so do you have a, a backup report? Is Mr. Aaron still with us?
I didn't realize I was still muted. I apologize. Nothing of great substance. In the coming weeks slash months, we'll be waiting to hear from the township as to when and who they'd be appointing as a township manager. And I think some more of the discussions that Mike and I have had will become more substantial at that point. And, and similarly to the work that the Facilities Committee is doing in terms of the Transportation Center and relating that with the township. I think that would definitely begin to take a little bit more pace. So we're kind of waiting on that at this point. But other than that, just to say thank you to our officers as well as our Public Works employees and the Parks employees that are continuing to work and, and keep our community beautiful and whatnot.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Aaron's. Superintendent's Report, Dr. Phillips.
Um, nothing more to add basically than what I started out with. Just wanted to state though, that I am gonna participate tomorrow in a Berks County Community Officials Roundtable. So there may be some updates that come out of that from the local agencies that I'll be able to share.
Thank you.
End of my report.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I know, Mr. Way, I don't know if you're still on there, but we are sort of in the practice of seeing whether we have any additional comments that have been submitted electronically from the community. I know we had one in the very beginning. Have we, have we picked up any additional comments throughout the meeting?
We have not.
Okay, thanks very much. Before we adjourn, I do want to announce that we will be having, the board will be having an executive, executive session to discuss personnel issues this coming Thursday evening. And with that, I'll accept a motion for, oh, let me, before I do that, let me just ask. Are there any board members who would like to be heard at this time?
David, I wanted to congratulate Eric Flamm, our junior high principal, on finishing his dissertation. And congratulate him by saying, I'm to be in a doctor. And that's it. Thank you.
Awesome. Didn't know that. Thanks for, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Congratulations, Dr. Flamm. Any other comments? At this time, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, folks were adjourned. And thanks again for your participation this evening and I'm sure we'll be talking soon. Everybody stay safe. Have a nice, nice night.
Night, everybody.
Take care.